One of our first orders of nice business is to reorganize the committee based on David Hewitt stepping down as chairman of the committee. At this particular time, I would entertain a motion for chair.
I move to make Mike Bell in the chair, please.
Second.
Are you okay with that motion, Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Second.
I have a limited life shelf life, so yes, I'm okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Stepping up, Richard Alexack, building inspector, Homer Road. Richard, what's up?
My agent on the street right now, so you can talk right to him, yeah, that's what, yeah. He can explain to you what he's doing.
I want to hear your report.
Like I said, he could've told you one thing, he could've told you, I wrote to you the first of the month, he said he got ten vehicles taken out of the lot so far, he's planning on working it till December 1st, and he's gonna take the winter off and finish it up next spring. That's how we agreed to it, but that's what he's doing, so he can explain to you.
Didn't you have it in writing?
I don't have it in writing, no. First of all, they're not there.
There was something in writing that was into a thing.
Yeah, it was a little memo, I sent to you.
Okay, well, it's memo, I'll put in the record as your report for this meeting.
Yep.
Can you find evidence that ten vehicles are gone?
Yeah, except for some stuff gone, but so much stuff fell out there, it's hard to tell if it's ten or twenty or thirty gone now. The big trailer trucks are still there, yes.
What's gone? Can you tell, identify what vehicles are gone, or are we talking?
They're all stuff that goes off the back, you can't even see it before, so.
I mean, are we talking the go-karts are gone, or are we talking the cranes are gone?
No, cranes are still there.
Well, I'm guessing I'm asking.
Trailers are still there.
Is it the big stuff that's gone, or the small stuff?
Little stuff.
The little stuff.
Reggie, did we have a letter, did we send him a letter, Mr. Yumel's letter? We did. We held off on the letter, and we discussed with him that we actually were pretty lenient with him, he intended to tell me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was September 1st or August 31st.
August 31st.
October 31st.
31st.
Okay, so here it is, the end of September, and we worked with him on this, and I do think that the board should entertain, send a letter, revise the letter from the attorney, and send it home.
Why, should we hear from Mr. Yumel, since he's here?
That's fine.
Mr. Yumel, do you wish to say anything?
Well, I'd like to say that I've been working my brains out up there trying to get everything the way you wanted it, but this is a non-conforming lot. It's, and it dates back to the 1880s as a sawmill. It's a non-conforming lot, and anything that I think I can use to haul logs, or move logs, or work with logs is not required to leave.
Richard, what do you say to that? Is it a non-conforming use?
Is it a working sawmill?
I'm a member of the.
More than a sawmill was worked.
Well, we can work a sawmill anytime we want to work a sawmill. We've done everything legal, as far as I know, and we can even bring in a brand new sawmill if you want. I mean, you gotta tell me, you gotta tell me what it is that you want.
Well, like I said, don't crack the drillers. You crack the drillers boxes of all the stuff out there, art uses.
The truck and trailer boxes are, are storage of the sawmill, some of them have pine boards in them with it.
All right, Mr. Yumel, this is the first time I've heard anything about a sawmill on the property. That was not our, when we had our discussion earlier, I don't think there was any mention of sawmill.
This violates the zoning regulations.
Yeah.
It's, the sawmill has been there since the 1880s, and it's a non-conforming lot. It always has been, and, and there's no reason not to, not to have.
Any, any comments from any other board members?
I haven't heard anything about a sawmill up until this point, and with all due respect, sir, I think that you've had every chance to remove the equipment like we've asked for, and it hasn't been done.
Well, the equipment goes with the sawmill, the sawmill is part of it, that is, the sawmill property.
Perhaps we should've talked about the sawmill four or five months ago.
Please?
We should've talked about a sawmill four or five months ago.
Well, I didn't know what to talk about, I've been trying to be careful and not talk about too much, but it seems like my words always need to get bent around and used in a way that I didn't plan it to be. Plus, I'm extremely nervous standing here talking to the board, and I really don't want to make a mistake and say anything that would upset anybody.
You don't want to upset?
I'm a member of the Farm Bureau, and I've discussed it with a member of the Farm Bureau, and the gentleman there in Boston explained to me that the trailers are not a problem as long as we're using them accordingly.
Richard, do you have the pictures that you have?
I've got pictures of Cadillacs out there, ice cream trucks and everything else.
Well, I mean, first of all, sir, why don't you come and sit down?
One second, miss.
The ice cream truck is gone, the Cadillac is gone.
One second, Mr. Yumel. Jackie, did you want something?
No, I was just gonna say, why can't he come and sit down and talk to us rather than?
Well, I'm a little bit nervous about it.
Well, don't, you shouldn't be. Let's talk about, let's, let's talk it out and see what we can do.
Can I say something? The building inspector has not worked with us at all, so this is all process.
One second, sir, let me, let me finish with the board, and then we'll address you.
Go ahead.
Jackie, do you have more to say?
No, I was just saying, so that we can communicate properly, I would, if you would like to sit down, sir, then we can know what you have and what we can do and make this.
Well, the ice cream truck is gone, the first two trucks that I bought off of that holly are gone, you know, they were there for thirty years, please?
You bought them off to town.
I bought them off to town, right, and you were the boss there when I bought them. You knew I bought them, because you asked me a favor to sell one of the cabs to one of your friends on the other side of town.
No, I did not.
Yes, you did.
No, I did not.
The, so I don't know why these vehicles were upsetting him, it seems like everything I'm doing upsets him now, and I don't know why.
The first part is, sir.
I haven't done anything to this gentleman.
One, one second, Mr. Yumel, where did this complaint, Richard, came from?
Right here.
Sir, your name?
Arthur Lawrence, 1013 Craig LeDro.
And you brought us a complaint about the equipment stored there?
I did.
Thank you, sir. So this did not originate with the board, this originated with someone in the neighborhood who found objection, and I have to say, sir, I have an objection, because most of these vehicles probably have some sort of petroleum products in them, and they're stored, they seem to be very old and stored.
Not very old in there, stored inappropriate in there.
Well, how about the lady standing upside down, leaning against the trailer?
That's been.
May I make a comment, please?
One second, sir. All right, here's, first of all, let's be clear, the complaint did not start here, the complaint started with a question from the neighborhood. Now, the other issue, will we hear from you, sir, in your name?
My name is Sean Yumel. Building inspector has not worked with my father at all, he hasn't been to the property. The last time he came to the property, my father offered to walk him around the property, and he refused, so he doesn't know what's on the property, because he won't work with us. Well, all those pictures are gone, that stuff's all gone already.
What's gone, tell us what's gone, give us what you.
Show me the pictures, and I'll tell you what's gone.
One that you were laughing about the last time with the last meeting. We have what appears to be a crane on the first picture.
Yeah, the crane's still there. That's gone. That's gone. That's gone.
Slow down, let's get a. Whoa, 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 let me mark, you're saying they're gone, let's identify the ones that are gone, and then we'll discuss it.
I don't like coming up here, but.
We don't like having you here.
I know.
Are any of these gone?
Thank you for being so polite.
Are any of these gone?
No.
Oh.
Those trailers are registered.
Okay. They're registered, current registration?
That's right.
The ice cream truck is gone, or whatever this is?
Yes, whatever that is, is gone, yeah.
B and B market?
B and B market is gone.
That's gone.
Which one?
The whole thing, everything in that picture.
Everything is gone?
Yeah, that's gone.
What about, looks like a plow, or whatever that's, the Cadillac is gone, what about the?
Cadillac's gone, I don't know about the plow. I don't think this is our yard, I think that's someone else's yard.
It's got a pile of wood just.
Oh, pile of wood?
I'm not, not that the pile of wood.
Take your property.
Not that the pile of wood.
This is not my property?
Yeah, that's right, I don't know, take my property.
Whoa, whoa, you're gonna address comments to us, not just, if you have a question?
He's telling me that's my property, and I'm telling him it's mine?
The pile of wood is not yours?
No.
What about the crane in the upper picture?
It's the same crane in the other picture. It's not one of mine.
So you're saying the lower picture is not part of your property?
That's what I'm saying.
All right, you want to say something?
My comments are, there are several vehicles missing, and you did, you took them off the property. You saw you drive by, established.
Many times.
Yeah, many times, but there's still quite a bit, majority of stuff is still there.
Well, no matter the direction.
Majority of the vehicles that are in violation of the zoning regulations are still there. Am I right, Richard?
Yeah, this goes back to 2009, that's what I sent this letter out to, I've been more than fair, four years now, October of '09.
In what order have you ever given us since '09?
You got all these letters, you've been a part of the board.
He's been here a couple times, as we.
The problem's been here, yeah.
We've never had anything specific, it's just a general order, and it's a sawmill, and that's all there is.
All right, then we'll make, if the problem is it wasn't specific, we'll make it specific now. But we did have specific agreement with your father as to what was gonna be done, what was not gonna be done, and I'm not, I'm not questioning that. Mr. Lawrence, in your opinion, has there been items removed, or vehicles removed?
Been a few items removed, yeah.
What does his opinion have to do?
Well, we will see soon, because the leaves will fall, and it will be pretty open up to everybody.
All right. Who made him come?
Hey. We've been, we've been going, you know, Mr. Franklin, we've been going through this for, you know, I've been, I've been working with, talking to Rich over a year on this.
And I appreciate.
I finally came to the, to the board, because nothing was getting done, Rich showed me a big stack of photos, I mean, you see it from a satellite, that's how bad it is, so.
What's the board's pleasure?
My job is to work with Mr. Yumel, well, I think we worked with him on previous occasions, and we gave him as much leeway as possible for him to get this. He set the guidelines, we didn't set the guidelines. He came up to date, because he wanted to finish work from where he was, and he was gonna be available all summer to clean it up. Now, that was a discussion, you set the date when it was gonna be out, we agreed to the date, and if I'm wrong, members should speak up, but I believe that's how I remember. Now, we set the date based on your, your comments, that you had plenty of time to move it out, but you couldn't move right away in the spring, because you had another job you had to do, and summer come, you were gonna finish, finish your job, and come in here and clean up the mess.
Well, I've been working here really hard for three months, I've, you know, I haven't gone to the beach this year, I haven't gone fishing, I haven't done anything but concentrate on South Hampton, that's the only thing I've done, is work for you people for free.
You're not working for us, you're not working for us.
Right, but I'm working because of you, because you are commanding me to do this, all right, so I've done this, I've done this now for three months, and, and, and if we wanna work together, if you wanna let me keep, keep working, I will, if you don't want me to keep working, I don't know what you want me to do.
I want you to stop and listen to me.
Go ahead.
If you remember, there was an enforcement order going back to you, back in early spring, because of this, a letter written for Rich Alexack by the attorney, and because of your violations.
Right.
We intervened as a board, as a whole, I think the board, you may not speak, intervened on that, and said, we will stop, and we do an opportunity, clean it up.
All right.
You set the guidelines, you set the timeframe, we agreed to it. That timeframe came to an end over a month, just about a month ago.
Right.
All right? I asked Rich to come in, give us an update on that, okay? Now, if you're gonna blame us.
No, I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm telling you, I've been doing a bang-up job there so far, and, and if there's some misunderstanding about what we're doing, then.
Well, the understanding was, we gave you all the latitude to pick the date, and you needed time to work and make money.
And I've done what you want me to, go ahead.
Hold it, hold it, that's what you wanted to do, we went along with that and stopped the proceedings at that point, not at a point of looking at those proceedings again.
All right, all right. Rich, do you have the letter that town council, or the local council sent? This was the proposal.
This is a non-conforming lot, so, is that correct?
Well, residential lot.
It's a non-conforming residential lot.
The original thing is the residential lot, you know, what?
Non-conforming lot.
Well, you were against our bylaws.
Wait, 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 Mr. Yumel, did you receive the letter from the town attorney sometime back in March?
I don't.
Well, the certified copy went unsigned, but the regular mail copy never was returned, so the presumption's gonna be that you got the regular mail copy.
I guess you consumed that.
And at that point in time, they were prepared to commence enforcement actions if the violations continued, and I would take it that from Rich's comments that the violations continue at this time. You've been put on notice of a warning from town council as of March, or by letter dated March 15th. Richard, do you have the actual letter? Glad you would be here.
I can read it, I can have it filed here.
Would it take you long to get it out?
I'm just gonna see if Rich has it here before I run down.
I've just got my own back of course, I'm packing.
Let's get the letters that we sent as far as enforcement in March.
I just have a question.
One second, Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, just one thing, the state also has been involved, and I think Mr. Colley has a letter from the state.
One of the actions we did as a board was, I believe, someone wanted to, or Rich suggested to go to the Board of Health or the Conservation Committee enforce. We decided the building inspector do his job, and the conservation do their job. There was a letter here from DDP in regards to conversation, the conversation that conservation had with DEP, and basically what it says, it lies unto the Board of Health to enforce the rules for junkyards and illegal dumping. So they're looking at that from another parameter, we're looking at it from zoning enforcement.
Yeah, but I'm not doing illegal dumping. What illegal dumping can my source have done?
They're saying that all these vehicles that have been abandoned there over the years is illegal dumping, and under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. Now, the Board of Health is not here, you're welcome to get a copy of this, I don't know if you have that one already, I'll save it to CC, you know, this was to the, to the Board of Health Department, July 12th, but I'll give you a copy of it tonight, Mr. Inspector.
Say name.
I'll give you a copy of this letter from DDP.
Yeah?
I just have a question.
Yeah?
How much, how many trucks, or what, what does he have on the property now that has to still be removed?
Well, everything there, that's there now can, is pertaining to, I can use for logs and the sawmill. I mean, if they say that this particular piece doesn't, isn't going to be used for the sawmill, then I'll, I'll have to part and company with it, but as far as I'm concerned, everything that's there now is capable of moving logs and helping me work.
Do you, is this an established, I mean, do you have a permit for this work, or I mean, how much?
There, it's an established business in town, it was established, I have my name in the book, and it's a sawmill.
What's the name of it?
It's, I think, South Hampton Sawmill, or Parsons, South Hampton Sawmill, one of the other.
And how much do you produce? I mean, how much are you taking out of there?
How much do I take what out of there?
I mean, it's an active sawmill, are you?
Well, I just, I, right now, I've just been trading in logs, I do probably $3,000 a year, because I know it's, it was a place for me to retire at, but if they want something, they want the sawmill buzzing away and doing eight hours a day, then I'll start working and doing that, and I don't, I don't, perfectly are everything.
I'm not sure how it's zoned, so I don't know.
Well, it's, it's a non-conforming lot, that, from the 1880s, that, that has been, always been a sawmill, so, and all the pieces are there, the roof came down, that's the most, that, all, everything is there from the 1800s, and if they want to be running it, I'll run it.
We don't have it? We don't have that letter?
She just told me he knew what she said.
He knows this is a non-conforming lot, and a non-conforming lot that.
A non-conforming lot does not give you permission to operate a junkyard out of it?
No, we're not running a junkyard, any of the pieces that I have there now are for the sawmill.
You would probably not be able to operate a sawmill there under modern subdivision or zoning regulations.
Correct.
All a non-conforming lot lets you do is operate your sawmill, it doesn't give you a permission to operate a junkyard or other businesses that go with it, and I don't think we're gonna let you claim that every trailer that's there is used to store wood on. You may be able to get one or two for that purpose, if you're only doing $3,000 worth of work, but at this point in time, I don't have the letter from the attorney, so my suggestion is we'll get the letter from the attorney, we'll send that to you again, and from there on in, the violations are gonna click in if the board agrees.
Okay, violations click in, that means I'm gonna get fined, and you're gonna wind up owning the land, is that what the?
That is not what we intend to do, sir, we wanted the property cleaned up, I think that's, was the wish of the board, is to have the property cleaned up, it has not been accomplished.
The property has been cleaned up a great deal, and if, and we gotta know whether I'm able to keep something or not keep something. Am I allowed to keep things that move logs?
You are certainly allowed to keep some things that allow you to move wood around the property, but you are not probably allowed to keep fishing items that we have these pictures of, and I understand some of this is gone, but a lot of it is not gone, and I think the board has to decide how they'd like to be, go from here. Does the board, does the board need to hear any other information?
Well.
One second, sir.
No.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
I am, one second. Still getting from the back. Thank you. I'll give, Mr. Lawrence, anything further to say?
Yeah, I, I mean, I read the bylaws, I mean, I can't understand English, I don't see anything non-conforming, you know, I have no idea, that is residential, you know, rural residential, on every map I've seen down here, I've been to the assessment's office, and I don't understand this, this sawmill, and, yeah, I, I may be back in the 1800s, but I don't think anyone's been cut there in probably 100 years, so.
Thank you. Mr. Yumel, anything further to say?
I did have something to say, and I, where were we at before?
I'll come back to you then. Richard, anything to say? Mr. Yumel, the son?
Well, I think Lawrence's comments are way off base, he doesn't know what that is, and that's, that's.
Do you have anything to add to this discussion?
That's what I added.
All right. Anyone else in the public have anything to say? Anybody on the board wanna say anything? How does the board wish, Mr. Yumel, anything to say at this point in time?
Well, I would like to say that I, in good faith, did all I could this summer to accomplish what the board wished me to accomplish, and if we have any disagreements about any particular piece of equipment, I'd like to know what that is, and have the necessary time to acquire it, to do that.
Board, what would you like to do?
Well, I was just gonna say, if, the equipment that you do have, if you could show us how it'd be applicable for logging, I mean, why you need to keep it?
Well, a crane picks up a log from one and swings over and drops it on the other end, or takes it off the truck and puts it on the ground.
Right, right.
Or takes it off the ground and puts it on the truck.
Mm-hmm.
That's what happens with the crane.
But that's one piece of equipment, but they're saying there's a lot more there. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need to do something.
Okay.
There's a forklift there, and there's a blackhead truck, you know, that, that's all stuff that you use on occasion, it's.
So that's four.
Like the farm, you know, you only use the manure spreader at a certain time of the year, only you have it all year round, you know, it doesn't, doesn't mean that it has to be sent to the junkyard, you're not using it in the ball.
Is there any of that equipment leaking?
Please, no, nothing's leaking that I know. It's the same as anybody, it's the same as the town barn, is there any of the equipment that are leaking? We don't think it is, if it is, it would be correct.
Most of our stuff is stored inside the jack tail, and I'll be, excuse me.
So you might have to reword me, but I would like to make a motion that we move forward with a revised letter from a lawyer to be sent to Mr. Yumel.
Just for discussion purposes, I was out there before we started the work, Richard and I, just to give them due process, and give them the benefit of the doubt, I'm willing, we don't have, we can bring the whole board here, or what, or another board member with me, or a building inspector, and do a tour this week, so we can render an opinion next week, and I'd be happy to do it Thursday morning or afternoon, if there's some people available, I'd like to go there and see for ourselves. I haven't walked the property since this, I know this, there's a lot of items out there, but I would like to have a building inspector there, and the Board of Health, who came in on this, and probably Charlie McDonald, who is also working on this, the conservation coin, so, I'd like to have three departments there, and at least two members in the board. We have three members, we have to postpone the meeting.
Yeah, you gotta be available.
I'll be available.
What time are we talking about, on Thursday?
When you get out of school.
Okay.
I can't be.
Well, you're not gonna see much of the dark.
No, no, I'd have to go early in the morning.
Is that all right with you? You're welcome to be there, you were just talking, make that a motion, and why don't?
I, I may talk to my father for a second.
You have to be my guest.
Well, but, you step out if you're paranoid. The thing I would suggest is that you go out with a can of spray paint, and if he says it's not a vehicle he mean, you hit it with something so that we can identify those vehicles from here on in.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, pictured with X, something that identifies that.
I'll use an water spray paint.
Well.
Do you wish to have us do an inspe?
I know, I'm not really a crazy man about that.
Okay.
Then my motion is.
Well, she had a motion.
Okay, I have second motion to do the enforcement order.
Okay, to do that for enforcement order?
Correct.
Okay, this is gonna be the next step beyond the letter we sent the last time, I think, if I read that correctly, all right. Any further discussion? You're in on, on favor?
Hi.
Hi. Jackie?
I, you know, I'm just gonna abstain, I just feel like I wanted to know more.
All right, thank you, sir. Your letter is in our folder, or your?
I did. Before we get to anything, what have we got next? What are we gonna do?
All right, we got, we got warrants all over the place.
Madam clerk? Send them down?
Are you gonna do?
We don't have to.
Second shift, there you go.
It's cute. We've got new folders, haven't we? Wow. The logos.
Two, three. Yeah, great. Okay, so. Having a select member of the planning board have a subcommittee step in, and I didn't think that, is it possible that he could fill you in, and then, and vote on it, and have another meeting, and then be agenda?
Is that a?
He can, he can tell you about it, but you can't vote on it?
No, no, what I'm talking about, I'm a select member, you haven't planned one. You don't know either.
Would you rather we signed it to town council first, and then have that answered that for you?
Yeah, I don't, in my years, I don't, Hank's here now, too. In my years on the planning board, did we ever have a situation where we had to temporarily appoint somebody or can we temporarily appoint?
Situation?
They need an extra member on the planning board because they've got too many conflicts coming up. And they look, they don't, they're looking, they have a quorum, but barely...
We have, we have a quorum, we have three.
You have three, but they don't want to do it with just three. They're looking for a couple of extra members to...
Just, just one member. Yeah, one of them is, one member's, uh, going out on attorney leave, we're not sure how long, and the other one, and all it is, is just for one particular project. It's not for all, all matters.
I don't remember how we, we never had that problem.
Well... The board's selectmen can...
I don't understand. Somebody's not going to be there and somebody has a conflict of interest?
Right. And they're looking at...
Can defer, so, uh, somebody who's not going to be there can be there?
Long-term.
I think, I think, do you have something that says we can't do that?
Uh, I don't. I thought you guys might. Um, if, no, we don't spend any money on the attorneys for this, we'll just go out with three. It's not...
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a big thing. It's not like it's going to cost something.
No, it's just a quick phone call. Yeah.
So, I, I think if, if you feel better, I think I'd rather have more people to ask the questions.
Right. At this point, I'd say no, because it's actually starting on, uh, October 4th. So by the time we get together, I'll already have it, it'll be underway. So, yeah, I just found out the application was coming in, so not a, not a big deal. We'll make a go of it.
In my years, I don't remember ever having to do it.
Yeah, I, I know that a couple of communities that I have dealt with have done that, um, in my career, so.
It might be the bylaws.
Yeah, no, we, you know, we'll do it for zone board.
Yeah, that's, that's, because I'm the alternate on here.
No problem. We'll make a go of it.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I saw the, no, I saw the thing coming around.
Somebody's cooking something.
All right, go ahead, who's got the warrants?
Oh, I have them. So... I have some of them to be ordered. Hi. But they're not. 14, 12. Sorry. I just don't see 14 dash 13 in that amount. That's what I'm missing.
There's two, um, two forms and...
There's dash 13 right there.
I got it. Okay. So we have payroll deduction warrant, 14 dash 13, in the amount of $40,827.24. Everyone can sign it.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion? Or second motion or something?
Second?
Decide. Go ahead.
We have payroll warrant 14 dash 13 dash one, in the amount of $143,531.57. I can't sign it.
Now that you can't make a motion?
Oh, right. Sorry.
And I'll make the motion, though.
I'll make the motion for payroll 14 dash 13 dash one for $143,531.7. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I abstain. Okay. Payroll 14 dash 13 dash two, in the amount of $21,635.39. Ed can't sign it. Have a second?
Second, someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No Ed.
No Ed.
All right, if I went that way, we'd get their signature for motion.
And payroll warrant 14 dash 14 dash three, in the amount of $268. Jackie can't sign it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We already signed this, all right.
And then we have bill warrant 14 dash 12, in the amount of $380,333.30. Ed can't sign it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you do the 14, no, 13?
Yes.
So you moved on to it?
Yes. Because I thought I heard that one.
Can you just double check before we walk away?
Forty, and 268.
But the one is, the 14, 13 was a two, wasn't there's two now?
Oh, okay, sorry. So this, this one, this one, can I say that one's number one?
14 dash 13.
We all missed out.
Yep.
14 dash, what is that, dash two, dash two we can't sign?
Right, what we missed from the first one? That one. You need one.
Oh, I got it.
All right, we get that. Hank's here, can we, um, do this master plan implementation? Did you come in about master plan implementation for me?
Uh, yes, I can, we asked that we put on a call for the, whatever, the store at large members, and remind the boards that they have to, uh, pick something up.
All right, we were going to send, did we, we didn't do that?
We did send a letter to all members, but I did something, um, put this afternoon to plenty of water conservation. I think I see it as well.
And we were going to, go ahead. And we were going to send a letter to the, your past board members and ask them to the, for the implementation committee? If that was okay?
I assume you put all the general calls as well?
Well, we would do that, too.
General ones. Few of those people might be burned out.
Can't understand that. But that, so we, we are moving along on that. Um, can we take a form? Did we appoint you the chairman the last time of the implementation meeting?
You did, although I think at the first meeting, there are the...
Yes, but I mean for the temporary, to get them, get things organized. So I think that's where we are.
I would like to call a meeting late October. I'm going to be away near October. Hopefully by then we'll have some response.
Well, when we read, if any, Reggie gets any responses, why don't we, um, forward them on to you?
I receive two questions.
But I think you have to appoint the four.
Yes, yes.
Four.
Right, but who gets four letters? And I would put out a request to the public that if anyone's interested in being on the master plan implementation committee, that they contact either Hank Barton on Pomeroy Meadow Road, or Reggie in the select board office, and send us a letter of interest, and we will see about appointing him. We need four at large, at least four at large.
You really have the direct and prefer, because I'm in possession, I'm going to be away for...
Then any, any requests go to Reggie, to the select board office. All right. Anything else on the implementation meeting?
No.
Uh, we did the bill warrant, we have PCS. And why?
Fight by the P-Box.
Is that why, you're white by the P-Box?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
She's getting bids.
Um, we have a bunch of PCS. I have one for Roy Christopher. Hire date eight five, 2513, a new hire for an EMT firefighter. I have Megan Pike, date of hire eight four, 2013, replaces Joshua Donovan, EMT, for the fire department. I have Joshua Donovan, date of hire one twenty six eleven. Oh, he's leaving to take a job in another fire department, so this is a resignation. I have Jennifer Day, date of hire nine nine thirteen, replaces Jane Howard, volunteer coordinator for the, must be the council agent. I have a William Colletta, um, retirement, temporary interim chief. I have a Highway, oh, this is posting, this is posting. I have a, let me come back that, then. I have a Joseph Veal, uh, date of hire one seventeen thirteen. He's back from the service, he's being put back on the fire department. I have a Richard Fassoli, date of hire ten twenty ninety four. Uh, Richard Fassoli, oh, okay, I remember. Being promoted to deputy chief, so he gets a raise for the fire department. Kyle Milkymore, if I said that correctly, Kyle isn't... Oh, no, he's being promoted to a deputy chief also. Alan Torrey, um, is getting an increase due to added workload.
Promotion to...
Promotion due to added workload and... He's being, oh, he's being promoted to lieutenant down there. Jameson Levalle, Levalle, resignation because of work from the fire. He's resigning because he's busy at work from, and he's resigning from the fire department. Richard Paul, being separated from the fire department. Did you see that one? That one should get passed around. Corey Ducharme, date of hire nine eight thirteen, um, to the fire department as an EMT firefighter. Mark Thieru, to the fire department, eight twenty thirteen, replacing Richard Paul as an EMT firefighter, one and two. Reggie's this year temporary?
Yes.
And Regina Sullivan as interim town administrator, or on a continuing temporary appointment. And then we have the posting for a highway heavy equipment operator.
I saw it. It's in, did you see it?
Thank you. Yeah, it's in here, yeah.
Does anybody want to make a motion on all of those?
Uh, I want to take the fire department.
Oh, they're all mixed up.
We got a fire, we got a highway closing, and we got Reggie.
Yeah, well, okay, so you want to break it down? To the fire department. Anyone want to make a motion on the fire department?
I make a motion to find the PCS for the fire department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reggie's temporary appointment?
Make a motion to sign Reggie's...
Temporary.
Temporary appointment. Appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And then we have the highway department posting.
I make a motion to sign and hold the highway posting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I see your understanding. Give me a minute to catch up on signatures. Reggie, I'm not dating these, if you dated them, you can get them. So you're just getting all of your, your warrants?
So this has to be signed, and...
There was one PCS that was a council agent.
Yes, that was that first one. Do you want to make a motion on...
I make a motion on PCS for council agent, too.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So, get back to...
Then we have, um, a, a town election warrant for state senator, um, Tuesday, we're going to have an election Tuesday, eight, October 8, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We need to have a motion assigned to that, so it can be posted.
I make a motion, sign the warrant for special election.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If I'd be able to say that. And then we have something, oh, this is for David's designs, well, for Chairman, I thought. Yeah. This is, what is?
That's, that's on block grant, community development, um, with those, those for the lumps, the small lumps. She's looking to close it out, and she cannot do so unless...
When does this have to go back?
It was on the agenda last week, but it was never discussed.
But I haven't read it, uh, kind of, the way you thought you did, because it looks like a bit of reading there before we sign. I should ask for anything, anybody from the public before we go too far into this? Any comments?
Robert Floyd, 50 East Street. Uh, the Celebrate Southampton, uh, Celebrate Southampton Harvest Day is going to be Saturday, October 5th, and so far, we have the 10 o'clock next door, Judith Cullen will give a talk on Legends of Southampton, and then 12:30 lunch in Cullen Park, and then 6 o'clock, the acapella group will sing at the church at 6:00, and we hope to have tables and booths, and I'm in contact with people who have the, uh, Mr. Cully have the tables and the two tents. You volunteered last meeting to, to help move.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that could be done tomorrow.
Yeah, just do some, uh...
Okay. Okay.
Any more nuts, anything else? Um, not, we are down to appointments, uh, to the Public Safety Council. George Zimborski, asking to go on to the Public Safety, they're short.
I make, um, I make a nomination of George Zimborski to the Public Safety Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, we have an executive session scheduled at 7:30 to discuss the fire chief contract, so I figure it would be inappropriate to discuss signing the fire chief's contract at this point in time. Where's that?
No, I'm here, I'm looking for, uh, stuff whatever they're designing for.
Okay. Go ahead.
In regards to the water park superintendent, uh, Mr. Sliwery is not leaving as of yet. Uh, he wants to stick around and finish the well, uh, adopt his new well field. So he's planning on sticking around to have this test completed. Uh, inadvertently, um, Mass Rural Water asked for a, um, a copy of a proposed job description for superintendent, and we gave them one that we were working on, and they inadvertently took it to certain people, and they advertised it for your charge for us, but we weren't looking for a superintendent at the time. But currently, uh, Mr. Sliwery's still staying out to finish the well project, and he'll make no decision on that.
Um, did, every, you said you got the, uh, auditors' report, the draft report, did everybody, I didn't get all the way through it, it became leaked today, but everybody's got it. Um, so we need to schedule a meeting with the auditor, auditors to go over that. Um, we need to get comments back from the department as to how they're going to rectify the situation.
There's two days that the auditors are available, which is September 30th or 22nd, and if those are not good, we can keep that as additional.
Just, uh, part of this question, um, last time that I met with the auditors, uh, there was a, you had a question in the interim period by department heads going back and forth, and I take a very helpful, uh, that these comments to address what needs to be done is, should be received after we have a, a chance to communicate what they, what they need corrected, and it might be a matter of interpreting things differently.
So you're suggesting the department a meeting with the auditors first?
And then, then make, make the, uh, auditor board adjust, address the situation in the future.
And then, then make, make the auditor or adjust, address the situation in the future.
The auditors are actually requesting the departments and two members of the select board to present, or at least one, and if there are one, then it's okay.
For that initial meeting?
That's for that initial meeting, correct.
Um, I didn't, what dates did you say?
The thirtieth and October second.
I haven't heard a calendar with any...
Thirty is Monday.
What day is the second?
Yeah, the second is a Wednesday.
Is it in the afternoon?
Three o'clock.
That's fine, I'm, I'm available.
Is anybody, is anybody, can anybody be here?
I'm the second.
Whatever, what a day.
Either day, I'm the thirty.
Either day's fine with me.
I just don't have a calendar, so I can't tell you.
Thirty is Monday.
Where's my calendar? It's here, but it's not my calendar. Um, I can be available at three o'clock.
All right, so you and Ed will leave with the auditors in?
Yeah.
The thirtieth or the second?
It's your call.
Can I call you first thing in the morning? Just look at my calendar on the wall.
You just let me know. Did, uh, Capital Improvement Committee?
Do we have any members on there?
We've not received the letters of resignation, however, from Donna Head, her finance, the finance committee, her finance person, come forward and say it's really important to have that Capital Improvement Committee stay active.
So all this, Rayo explained to me from, guys, we have a bylaw that's not being fulfilled, we need to have that bylaw fulfilled in order to meet the requirements of our bylaw, but also to look at, our bylaws being met as part of the movies rating and stuff like that.
So if she's, send a letter out to the past committee and ask if they're interested in signing, signing on?
Okay.
And if that doesn't work, then we'll...
I've already posted it.
Worst case scenario, we make ourselves the capital committee.
And that, I did send a letter to the finance advisors, saying as such that you had voted at one point in time to leave the Capital Improvement Committee, because they were inactive for the past two years.
Well, let's see if any of it comes forward, and not, then we'll have to do that. I don't know anything about the next two, anything? John, are you here for general entertainment purposes, or are you?
I like the sense of this, but, uh, here's two things, actually, uh, one is finance may relate, we were discussing the budget process tonight, and we're meeting two weeks from now to put the process together, so we'd like to meet with the Board of Selectmen on the twenty-second, if possible, to discuss the procedure for preparing and receiving...
Who's going to do what? I think that's a good idea. Twenty-second?
Twenty-second, which is four weeks away, I guess.
You know, why don't we, why don't we schedule a time now?
Seven is what I have next available, if someone else can meet.
Oh, okay, seven o'clock then?
That's great.
How long you gonna need, John? An hour?
A hour? As high as you are, I guess. I would, I would say an hour would be good, because, uh, you know, Liz is new, so it would be nice for a lot worse in time, uh, and we're meeting, uh, two weeks from now in the eighth to start the process, put the procedure together, get the, uh, pressure together, so if anybody up there, uh, select board Reggie, or ask Vicki to, if they want to come to me, that's, that's fine.
On the eighth?
On the eighth.
Should we send out a general notice to the town?
Well, no.
No, no, just that this, not that they're gonna, but that we're gonna discuss the process if they want to be here to observe what's going on.
You know, that might not be a bad idea, because part of what the policy and procedure we want in there is, it's sure as important fact that when we request backup documentation, we, we need to get it, because otherwise the process is going to slow right now.
I'm thinking the earlier they, they're here and aware of the process.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea.
All right, so would we send out something to department heads and ask them to be present to discuss the process?
Yeah, uh, the only issue, and I don't know if they would have an issue with it, is that they probably don't get that information before the meeting, so they'll be seeing it all at the same time, which you will too.
Right.
You have, you do have a projector that works though?
So where it works? The lights, yeah, lights on, I don't know if it's on or on, or, okay, let's see if we can do a PowerPoint. Any questions from the finance committee, please, before I close out?
No, that's what I'm worried.
Okay, and the only other thing on here is the town minister posting screening committee, we need two, two additional members, and we got Jim Lermol and Liz Moll, and that's two of a, that needed to be officially voted on.
Uh, somebody want to make a motion?
Do you already have a book in stock there?
I don't have one, I still do.
Okay.
Well, we can always take them later.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be an issue adding people.
No.
I'll make a motion to, uh, put Jim, uh, Paul and Liz Moll on the committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, can I go back to finance committee? One of the, the keys this year, we think, that we discussed last year is somebody from the board, and somebody from the finance committee meeting with the Hampshire Regional School Committee, so we can get our representatives in tune with the budget process, because there's already two people. Uh, this one from finance, one from the board.
Right.
Yeah, that's a liaison, so you folks could...
Do you want somebody tonight, or do you want?
Not necessarily, but it's, that's as part of the procedure, that I think is important because that's such a large part.
David is liaison, so I'm not sure if you guys want to change it, or?
Uh, you, Liz would.
I think that I said I couldn't be.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't mind being, but I don't know that I can.
Why? It'd be a liaison, and it would just be a, you know, you're not a voting member, probably, and we wouldn't be...
I probably would be more, more apt to go.
Yeah, are you anticipating multiple meetings?
Uh, I think we need to sit down with them first, explain our, our dilemma, and how they kind of steer the, the budget process and go from there. My guess is one meeting won't be enough.
So my only concern would be that I'm so new in the budget process that I'm not sure that I'm, I mean, how much input do I have to give them? Just the process?
It's the process and explaining how, how it affects the budget, I, I think it'll be fine, I mean...
Okay.
It's not discussing the number, for the most part, discussing the numbers, if I'm reading right, it's more discussing the philosophy of the numbers.
Right, and how it interacts with the rest of the budget.
Got it.
My guess is they don't truly know on some of that.
And how it affects the power.
Yeah, because they vote it there for one thing, and actually hurts them back here, so we gotta give a balance.
Okay.
Have you got any applications or?
Got some, I haven't opened them up, though, let me put you out in the...
That's what I did for a while.
It's on monster.com, which hits about eighty sites, uh, it goes in the, on the MMA webpage.
I saw it in the Coffee Journal.
Yeah, it's probably one of the ones that Monster hits, there's eighty sites underneath Monster, it's a good value. So I could get a few of them, but again, I hadn't opened, because I wanted to wait until we get the four committees all scheduled a meeting after the popping thing.
Anything else? Anything else, sir?
No, you can also, thanks.
All right, um, I don't know, did everybody get that memo that came off of Chief Silverman there? Okay, did you all get that memo that came off of Chief Silverman there today?
Yes.
On the safety, bringing up an emergency kind of motion I wanted to address that time. You all got the motion or the motion, but email from Chief Silverman, I can't talk with him anymore, and about the safety or the security of the building and his concerns, whether or not we needed to have further inspection done on, on the old town hall because of deteriorating brickwork on, on both sides of the unit, um, I guess there's two layers of...
There's two layers of brick up there, there's a cap doing.
You, you're most familiar with the building, why don't you?
Um, I did see the letter too, and I'm not disputing anything the chief says, I know the building's been in tough shape for many years, I think the last ten years we were dealing with bricks falling out of it, coupla's falling off the building, and there are issues, but we, uh, before we move forward and, um, take one of these recommendations, I do want to, um, have the building inspector go over there and, as well as get a copy of the feasibility report that was done before we entertain, um, setting a structural first over and to be a state evaluation. I'm not aware of anything imminent, but he might be, but I haven't heard anything that's, is anything imminent.
Should we get Rich in here and discuss this?
Yeah.
I think we ought to get Rich in. You don't think it's... That, that backboard, they are the more modern part.
Yes, the modern part, but I have been having, um, a janitor who, uh, who's starting to, knows how to point bricks, to take care of whatever you can reach from the ground up to those, worried, worried, more worried for water irrigation.
But, you know, there, there's a point that, you know, I made this recommendation three
or four years ago, that whole building shouldn't point to three or four years ago to stop what's happening, um, there's an issue, once water gets in between bricks, it freezes approximately, that's what happens, um, I don't think it's a, a bad idea with the chief, but let's see what was already done, the code will call it.
What are you gonna do, and just take it from the final, if you, if Rich goes over there and says it's a safety hazard?
You don't want to deal with it.
Okay, he came down the building, he's got point on?
I'd like to know about it. Well, I mean, he was in the building until a year and a half ago, I mean, two years ago, I mean, um, I, I would want, it takes a little more than that, what I think the chief was talking about, he's worried about that, uh, the bricks are, on the second course, the bricks is deteriorated to a point of nothing issue, uh, we need to look at.
I just wanted to...
I'm not an expert on that, uh, you need a structural engineer, but we did do a feasibility study on that building, um, and it was recommended not to pour a lot of money into it.
Well, I know, but I, I don't have a problem with something Rich over, but I don't know what he's gonna accomplish.
Well, I mean, we have to start somewhere, you know, I just think that Rich is familiar with some of the stuff that he's been, uh...
Rich, can you take a look at this, and I don't know whether she gave you an update if he came down the hall?
I think he just called me this afternoon at, all good.
Will you take a look at that building?
Yeah, I'll be there tomorrow morning.
Do you also take a look, I don't know if you have a copy of that feasibility study that was done, see how it relates? I don't know if they did anything structural, or if they weren't in there, did anything mechanical.
Haven't seen it, so.
Okay, so, but I know Reggie has a copy, and, uh, we just need a recommendation, whether we should bring a structural engineer in here our next course to take a look at.
Yeah, he called me this afternoon, said, I'll get it tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right, so you are already aware of it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rich, sorry for trying to drag you down.
No problem.
Um, and what's next? Anything, anything we missed? Anybody?
Question, I don't know what happened, but two, two, three weeks ago, we, we vote to post, I was sort of then scheduled.
Yeah, but we did.
Yeah, but the personnel position obviously to be personal one.
Now, maybe even...
Well, if it's for the hosting, all they have to do is approve the hosting, doesn't have to run around the whole game and tell everybody.
I'm just following the procedures.
So it's gone over PQB?
Yeah.
It's gone to PQB?
They got asked to, if they could meet right away, so that we could get a posting.
This is the first time, I'm just under the impression it was being posted, but, um...
Well, are we right that it has to be approved by PQB?
Well, postings?
Yeah.
They should go there, but it's not a matter of having it go to the finance committee afterwards, the select board, once, we, we established procedures years ago, once the posting was approved by them, unless it was a, an existing posting, but it's a new posting, uh, they could be posted right away.
So, but we need their approval on it?
We need their approval.
So it's over there now?
But they've already had the meeting last week, I, I don't understand why they didn't do it last week.
It was not on the agenda. On their agenda. Another thing is the job description changed, the dollar amount of the job changed, so do they have to re-score that, do they, you, you, that position that you're doing is, you can alter the one, so...
Well, the job, that's described as the job we've been doing for the last ten or twelve years, um...
And that's the job we want?
We included everything in there.
Right, and that's the job we want.
And that's, that, I mean, we, we put a range out of it.
And you didn't include it on seventy thousand, and that's it?
I don't think, I, money, I don't...
Yeah, I believe we did, not to exceed seventy thousand.
Not to exceed?
Just, well...
Okay, I'll, um, I'll find out where it is.
Okay.
Okay, because it...
I know.
Okay.
I didn't make the...
Still over eighty days left, guys.
I, I didn't make the last personal meeting. All right, next, anything else?
I'm just wondering if we're gonna, um, address some communication issues still in town hall, and get a department head meeting together, we've discussed in the past.
That would be, I would make that one of my goals, and I'm just looking at our meetings. What's on, do we have anything on the October eighth agenda?
Do you have a bid opening at six thirty? Also, that's the primary action, or, so you guys know.
We can meet in the morning, can we?
Can I have a carry?
We have a working meeting, talking about all of that, communication.
Yeah, and we never break a meeting, but, I mean, it's just, it's just, we can be, the only thing that can be is one of silly things, I forget whether it's planning board, planning board can be, one of silly, big, um, then, when's the first, the twenty-second, do we have somebody already at six thirty?
Actually, you have the, um, six thirty, five forty, from the Hampshire Council of Governments coming in, and then at seven o'clock, you have the finance committee with the department heads to discuss the budget process.
And I suggest we make it October eighth at seven o'clock for me, to discuss...
Captain.
October, is that one of our meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
To discuss communication issues amongst town hall employees, and I think, I would send the personal invitation to all town hall employees.
Everybody.
Is that somebody, did someone say everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Invite everybody.
Committee's awesome?
Committee's awesome.
Everybody.
Everybody, more than merit.
I might even bake you cookies. Maybe that will help to foster good communication.
We're gonna have peace cookies.
There you go, pick smiles on.
All right, so that's that.
And then a call from Lisa, we need a key, somebody will get a key. Okay, because, um, she's very excited.
Lisa.
I brought it, they need a key for their, their supply town station.
Oh, town station, all right, so that's that, um...
Can I, if we're talking about keys, can I jump in on that?
No.
No, you can't have a key. You want, you want that?
The key, we've been trying to get a key for a while, but it's become a hot item at the block house.
Unfortunately, we've been making it a general, we've denied everyone else who's come to us for a key, I don't know how we grant you a key, and have denied everybody else a key, but I'm, suffered a bore.
So how, how do we do that? I mean, it'd be great if you put like a proximity reader or a touch pad on there.
Still the old system, going over to the police department, getting a key.
Right, recording it, who has a key, who's at, who's in the building.
We've had some...
Is the culprit that doesn't lock the doors?
Well, sometimes you live in, you don't have a key, and, and we have to call the police department or a lot, so... What, what can this happen?
Today I couldn't lock it, and did we get it?
We've been turning down everybody's request for a key, so, I don't, we don't want you to feel special, or, we have been turning everyone down.
I'll risk it. So, okay, so nobody's, okay?
Nobody's got a key.
Okay, thanks.
Um, anything else?
Yeah, I would like to say, um, the monument across Rhodes Park, I saw a picture of the angel monument, and it is absolutely stunning, it was made in India, and it's just beautiful, they did a great job. And it may not go in until November, because they're shipping it.
Anything else?
Jack, just so you know, we have to deal with, um, putting the pad down there.
Right.
That might be a problem.
Well, we can do that prior to November.
Yeah, if you give me the diagram or stuff like that, I'll put that in.
I will.
Let's just sign it, right?
Right.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
Just because I like to cross things off these lists.
Yes.
What are we gonna do about this policy, board memos, all these memos, do they all need to be addressed one at a time?
Which one are you on?
Um, from under action list. And, uh, page two, it says personal policy board memos, complaint, public reports, PCFs, creation of definitions.
I'm not sure what that encompasses, and I was gonna look into that before we try and discuss that.
Fair enough.
I'm not sure what that was meant by that.
Okay.
And have we ever resolved a part-time employee issue in twenty hours?
No.
All right, and I have missed the last, last several PQB meetings, and I will now get back on track with that and go from there. Anything else?
Yes. Actually, in light of some of our...
I'm not gonna ask the question again.
Well, we have these things, we have to deal with them one of these years, um, since we have some guests here tonight that are, um, in, um, waiting for the answer for the poultry, and there is proposed bylaws, and I was wondering if we could establish a committee to go over our poultry bylaws. The chicken hat, you know, the...
Yeah, no, but I thought they fell under, uh, Porta Hill?
No, I mean, just to update our bylaws, clarify them, and have a committee go over the bylaws. Yes, Reggie?
Oh, it's great, because, by the, um, and at one point, the Porta Hill had actually, as far as the rules are made...
Oh, sorry, because, I mean, um, and at one point, the Porta Health had actually, as far as the rules and regulations, no, they didn't, they have no interest in changing it. That was when Josh was here, so maybe it's different with Adam.
I don't know, I just thought that fell in the attribute.
Yeah, we could actually pass it on to the advocate who's who's who.
So where are we with this? The chicken and egg?
Reggie?
With, in general?
Yes.
I don't know, I have never heard from a attorney.
But at last, the status was, it was the attorneys have...
The last status was that Rich did not sign the affidavit, um, and so...
Oh, that's right.
I think he was gonna do something for summary judgment, if I can say.
Yeah, something like that, I did see that. Why don't you?
I want everybody.
Why don't you look into that and come back to us?
Okay.
And can you look into that?
Well, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of bylaws. It's not just, there's subdivision bylaws, the planning board work. There's bylaws for Porta Health, there's bylaws for transfer station, there's bylaws for, uh, the water department. Everything going on and on and on. It's not just core four or five bylaws, you got personal policies, bylaws.
No, no, she wants to disinvestigate the chicken and the egg.
Oh, I thought she was into a mall.
No, 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 she's a doctor for chicken and the egg.
Right.
Look into the chicken and egg and, and see where we are.
That's fine.
Right, just to update the policies.
Well, and just see where this particular case is.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Did we, no, I'm not trying to create this any bigger than it is, didn't we have an issue with swines, so?
Come on.
I know it is, but it's tough enough dealing with the chicken and the egg.
Okay, we'll go with the chicken.
We'll go with the chicken for now and if we find the chicken, then we'll, we'll...
Okay, it's animal pig.
And an egg?
Um, I don't know what else to do. I mean, because it's, it's gonna come up in this community again.
And again.
We already have the horse, I mean, we certainly...
We do have a lot of chickens.
We have horses and we have some cattle and swine, some swines. And we have wild turkeys, so...
And roosters.
Have enough to have.
And ducks.
We could have turkey dinner. Wild turkeys that are walking around. Anything else? I digress. I'm not gonna ask it again because I learned. Alright, um, now you, we have...
Just coming back, uh... Did you have a memo? You talked about memos and, did you get a memo that the cost procedures were over for some minutes?
Yes, thanks, I have a question.
Did they get it?
That's on the agenda, let's, let's all pack it with the memos.
Okay. So do we have it, minis, they need to approve that?
I don't have it, that's not what they're looking for. The ministers they're looking for are online or in a binder.
Okay, but they're, approved minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, we can do that. Alright, um, here, we have on our public agenda the signing of the fire, new fire chief's contract. But we also have an executive session meeting to discuss the contract. So normally, I would announce that we are not going into open session again after the, after the executive session, but I assume we have to go sign the contract. So, this is an unusual situation that we are going into executive session to discuss the fire chief's contract and we are going to come back in, anticipating that we may sign the fire chief's contract in public session after the executive session. So if anybody wants to stay around for that, you're welcome to. Otherwise, I'd make a, accept a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing...
That's right, sir. Please, you're the one that's saying it.
Now?